Recording live from the Northeast Georgia Business Radio X Studio. This is Northeast Georgia Business Radio. Welcome back folks, welcome back to Northeast Georgia Business Radio. I am your host, Tom Sheldon. And yes, we are live from the beautiful Empower College and Career Center of Jackson County. Today I have with me, I like to say a special guest, but honestly, all my guests are amazing and they're all awesome. But this guy's pretty darn cool by his own right. I have with me today, Mr. Chad Bingham, Jackson County Commissioner, District Three. Chad, how are you sir?
I'm good, Tom. Thanks for having me in today.
You're always, you know, one, you're welcome, but you're always welcome. Hey, you can just trade seats with me and you host everything. I'm good with that.
Oh no, man, I got enough going on. I'll let you have it.
I hear you're a little busy these days.
Yeah, yeah, you know, with everything going on with the commission and everything and business and family, you know how it goes.
Well, yeah, I'm not a commissioner, so you know, I'm happy to take your word on that, at least for now, right? We could have a future. You never know.
Who knows?
Seriously though, you are Jackson County Commissioner, District Three, like I said, but you're also something awfully important. One, you're a business owner, successful business owner here in Jackson County, but you're also a dad and a husband, which that's like a job by itself.
Yeah, it is.
You've got a lot going on, brother.
I do, four great kids, fourteen, eleven, seven, and four. So I've been married to my wife Sarah for eighteen years. I hope I got that right.
Hey, when the microphone goes on, math and numbers, you know, you just, you lose track of stuff.
Sure.
So, let's see, you, how old is the oldest?
Fourteen.
And okay, there's ten years between them, so you won't have four teenagers at once.
No, Lord, I hope not.
You're lucky on that.
Yeah.
I guess what you would have, you could have three, could you have three?
Uh, yeah, I think we will have three.
That's enough at one time.
It'll be fine. You got great kids, man.
Hey, that's important. Well, they, they usually get it from their parents.
Yeah, they get it from their mom.
Okay, is that what it is? Is that what it is?
Yeah, and they're good looks too. We'll just give them to her.
Yeah, well, well, I think the old joke was, uh, my, my kids, uh, got their good looks from me because their mom still has theirs or has hers or some, something like that. Horrible joke, I just butchered, but that's, that's alright. So hey, Jackson County Commissioner, what does, what were some of the expectations, the job of a, of a county commissioner? We hear all the time, Commissioner Bingham, Commissioner Bob, Commissioner Joe. What in the world, what, what do you do, man?
Well, you know, the, the majority of it is just being about the county's business. You know, we have about a seventy million dollar budget, uh, I guess. And, um, you know, from all just the different things that are a part of that, from parks and rec to first responders to, you know, the public works, um, all kinds of stuff like that and personnel, I mean, your driver's licenses and, you know, unfortunately, tax assessments and all that all come out of the county, but that's, um, you know, we, we have a piece in all the workings of Jackson County.
So you make it happen more or less.
Yeah, I mean, you know, people, if they want, um, re-zonings or a business wants to come to town and that kind of thing, they have to usually come to us and talk about, you know, re-zonings and what they want to do and, you know, we try to keep standards and all that kind of stuff across the county so that we can create Jackson County into the county we want it to be.
I got you. I got you. We all, we all have a vision, right?
Yeah, let's hope.
Now, before you became a commissioner or District Three Commissioner, you, let's see, you, you are in the insurance world.
Yes, sir.
And I hear you're, you're a graduate of, of what, West Alabama?
Yeah, University of West Alabama.
I hear you. I hear you. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And it, folks, it's Bingham Insurance, was it Bingham Insurance Group?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Our main office is in here, it's in Braselton.
Right here in Braselton.
Eight locations across a couple of states, so.
I was about to say, you're all over Southeast, aren't you?
Uh, we sell pretty much all over the Southeast, but our actual offices are between Georgia and Alabama.
I got you. I got you. I got you. Hey, I had to throw that out there, man.
Yeah, appreciate that.
You're not some guy that just showed up and say, hey, I want to do this.
Yeah, right.
You have a bit of a vested interest. I think that's my whole point.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've, I've had a business here in Jackson County for, what, eleven years now?
Yeah.
Um, and, um, you know, you think back about that, my oldest son was three and my, uh, oldest daughter was just born when I started here, so. You know, it matters to me, this is where they're going to grow up and, you know, hopefully where they, should they decide they want to come back and hang around mom and dad, where they can come back to.
Well, I, you know, I tell you what, let's build a county, uh, that they want to come back to.
Well, that's the, that's what I'm here for.
I hear you. I like that. I like that. Now, you made a, you know, we're not supposed to timestamp a podcast because this thing is, is, lives forever. But you made, you recently made an announcement.
I did, I did.
Talk to me about that, brother.
Well, I've decided that I'm going to run, uh, to be the chair of the county commission. So, and that's a countywide, uh, election, so, um, next year, whenever the qualification happens, I'll have to step down from my District Three seat to, to run. And, um, but you know, for what I believe Jackson County, uh, can be and will be, uh, you know, I think I'm uniquely suited to be the person to lead the, the county in that direction.
So tell me about the vision. That, that sounds like a big step to me. You're, you're just a district commissioner, but now you're, let's see, the, the chair is over all the commissioners.
Well, everybody has the same vote, right?
Okay, do you? See, I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
So there's five districts and the five districts all have a vote and then the chair has a vote.
Okay.
So there's six total votes. Um, you know, one does, you don't get an extra half a vote or anything because you're the chair.
Okay.
Um, but let's be honest, I mean, you, you lead, uh, the things that are going on in the county, you lead the direction, you, uh, set the, the tone for different things, you're the lead in a lot of negotiations between things like service delivery strategies between the municipalities and
Gotcha.
the splosh money and the negotiations between the counties like that. It takes a certain kind of person, uh, to be able to juggle all that and to build the relationships and then also to, um, you know, basically try to do what's best for everybody. I mean, you still have to do what's right for the county. You're elected to the county.
Right.
But you also have to look at the Jefferson, Braselton, Houston, you know, Arcade, all those folks and understand that, look, we're all on the same team. We're all in the same boat. Like, this is Jackson County.
Right.
If it hurts one of them, then it hurts Jackson County.
Yeah, yeah.
And then on their side, they can't look at us like, well, it doesn't matter to us what happens in Jackson County. Well, it does. Because of all the things we just talked about that we're responsible for, so it's going to take a, a unique, uh, style of leadership to be able to, to do all that and pull it all together and get this ship headed in, uh, you know, the right direction.
I'm with you. I'm with you on that. Uh, so tell me a little bit about the vision, other than, than making sure the ship is sailing straight. Hopefully anyone in that position would be doing that, right? But tell me a little bit about the vision. Where, where do you want to take it?
Well, for me, like I said, we were just talking about that, where, um, it's for the whole of Jackson County, everybody in Jackson County.
No favorites.
Right, well, and you know, the rising tide lifts all boats.
Absolutely.
And that's, and I live by that, right? I've lived by that in my, my personal life. I live by that in my, in my business.
Mm-hmm.
Um, even if someone is struggling, wins tend to help, right? When you're winning, it tends to help the morale.
Absolutely.
And I think with Jackson County, I mean, we are one of the fastest growing counties in Jackson, in the state of Georgia, uh, at the moment. Uh, but it's how we grow and what we're, you know, how, where we're going to go, uh, after that. I mean, I believe there are opportunities working with the Chamber of Commerce and working with the municipalities and incorporated to bring in a certain kind of businesses here that can help us, uh, raise the Tax Digest. And you and I talked about that a second ago, that and if anybody doesn't know what the Tax Digest is, it's basically every parcel, uh, has a value and that would be if you add them all together, all thirty-eight thousand of them, that's the Tax Digest. That's what that means if we were to tax it at a hundred percent.
Okay.
So if you raise the value of everything in, you know, of the commercial properties and those kinds of things in Jackson County, you would bring in more tax revenue.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And then you would therefore be able to lower the tax burden on residents here.
Gotcha.
Um, that's the simple idea of that, but that's just one of the things. So, but how do you do that, right? You got roads that gotta be done, so.
Infrastructure's super important to everybody.
Everybody.
Residents, commercial, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, and so is water and sewer, you know, I mean.
Yeah, well, I consider that, yeah. You gotta get the water in, you gotta get the water out.
Yeah.
Super important.
Yeah, and, and you'll have people in the county who, you know, they're on wells and, and septic and that's, uh, but again, uh, it's, all has to work together, right? We're all in the boat. You know, a boat doesn't sink because of the water that's on the outside of it. The boat only sinks when the water gets on the inside.
Starts getting on the, yeah.
Right? And what we don't need, um, in Jackson County is the, the fighting that puts cracks in the boat. We need to work together. And that's what I've been doing for years, even with, you know, bringing the Empower Center,
Mm-hmm.
uh, helping bring that for the last seven or eight years to, to Jackson County was, uh, getting the groups together. We had over five hundred businesses, uh, who were, who signed on letters, uh, to get this, uh, facility here at the Empower Center. We had, uh, commissioners sign on, we had mayors sign on, we had senators sign on, all that. It's all about building the team and I think that's, the vision of Jackson County is, we've got to do it together.
We do. No, we do.
And we've got to be able to help people. We have, again, you know, we'll talk about it in a minute, but the seniors, uh, and the tax exemptions, uh, we need to work on that and, and how those things are happening. We've got, uh, opportunities where you've got a hundred and twenty-six families was the last number I heard that are homeless in the school system.
I've heard that same number recently, yes, sir.
And we have to, there's things in Jackson, they don't get any of the services that they need inside Jackson County. I think maybe Jeff over at I Serve Ministries with the Backpack Program is probably the closest uh, thing. Everything else seems to come out of, you know, Gwinnett Hall, Athens Clark or something like that. And, you know, Jackson County as a whole, there's this whole thing about Jackson County, uh, can be and should be and will be improved. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, I'll, I'll work, you know, the best that I can to get any of that, uh, or all those things, uh, taken care of. But that, that's what I think. I think it's a group together conglomerate of everybody working together.
Absolutely. Done right, this county can truly be a shining diamond, a shining star, whatever analogy you want to use.
Yeah.
Uh, of Northeast Georgia.
Right, and, and I think Jackson County is great.
It is. It's awesome. I love it.
But let's be honest, I mean, there's some places that we could all.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we need some improvements and I think that's what we need to be looking at as to ten, fifteen, twenty, and fifty year, uh, from now. And, and again, picking everybody up.
Yeah, well, well Chad, the, the growth is coming.
Oh, it's coming.
It's coming. And, uh, you can try to slow it down, but, uh, it's coming. Um, there's, but on the side of it, there's a right way, there's a wrong way to do everything.
Sure.
Uh, in my worthless opinion, forgive me for sharing any opinion, folks, there's, there are some very prime examples of what to do and what not to do just south of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Use those examples. Learn from it.
Well, you know, I've, I've got a couple of friends of mine, uh, who I've talked to who were, were commissioners twenty, twenty plus years ago down in Gwinnett County.
Right.
And I've asked them the question, hey, if you could go back twenty years, what would you do different? And surprisingly, you knew some of the answers were going to be, you know, infrastructure or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the, but some of the surprising answers is how they handled, uh, growth and where they put small commercial and the way that they did or didn't put that around the interstate and the way that they did or didn't, uh, try to do right of ways, uh, as those things came in, so. In talking with all those guys and, and one lady, it's, it's actually been a very unique, uh, learning experience for me that, hey, it's not just roads, it's not just water.
Right.
There are all these other considerations, uh, to be made, uh, here and, and how you go about improving the where, the places that you want to improve and, you know, the things that you need to slow down, how you go about doing that. Those, those guys are invaluable, uh, to me to talk to them.
You, yeah, a wise man learns, learns the, the mistakes and the successes of those around him.
Yeah.
I mean, that, just take a moment and listen sometimes, put, put the pride aside and learn from others. I, I, I'm with you on that. I'm totally with you on that.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm a middle child, so I watched my brother growing up and learning what to do and what not to do real quick.
I had two older sisters, so very similar situation, very similar situation. Uh, now, you, you mentioned something, something that's very dear to my heart, obviously, the Empower Center, the College and Career Center that this studio is in.
Right.
And, uh, the Empower Center has just been amazing to me. Uh, honestly Chad, those who know me, this is a dream come true to have this studio.
Sure.
It is. Uh, lifelong in a different industry. I honestly got too old, got very tired of it, and here I am. Uh, an overnight success. It took about a year and a half, but we're here, but we're here. You were, you, you mentioned you were part of getting this together, putting this together.
Yeah, so.
This, this, talk about a shining star.
Yeah.
This is a shining star, not just for Jackson County, but the surrounding area.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, this started, for me, probably, I don't know, what is it, seven, eight years ago, like I said earlier? Um, I was actually in the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Jackson Leadership Class.
Right.
At the time, I met a friend of mine, uh, April Soro.
Mm-hmm. April, dear friend of the show.
Yeah, she's, she's awesome.
She's amazing.
And, um, we were doing Transformational Tuesdays, uh, over there. And what that was is, you know, if you don't know anything about foothills, it's the kids who, uh, have dropped out of school for one reason or the other, and it's a different way for them to get their education and get their diploma.
Right.
So we're doing, again, Transformational Tuesdays, we're helping them write resumes, how to dress, how to shake hands, how to interview, stuff like that.
You're a mentor.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And, um, had a gentleman come up to me and, um, you know, he just said, hey, uh, Mr. Bingham, can I ask you a question? I said, sure, son, what's up? He said, where's my hope? And, and I honestly thought he meant his Hope Scholarship.
Right.
At the time. Now, he said, but where's my hope that I can raise a family in Jackson County and not live below the poverty line?
Oh, that's, that's a little bit different hope.
Yeah.
Wow.
And, um.
You don't just apply for that.
No, you know, he didn't want to apply for that.
Wow.
So where he was going with that is he said, look, you know, where is the hope that I can get a job in Jackson County? Uh, and, you know, I won't have to raise my family below the poverty line and.
Yeah.
You know, that, and during that time, I mean, our employment rate was in the, I think it was around eight percent, six, eight percent, somewhere in there. And we didn't have a lot, uh, of anything that could help change the future. Um, I mean, we had our education system, of course, but, you know, commerce and those kinds of things, we didn't have. And, you know, then April comes up to me and says, um, you know, a year later and says, hey, we have this opportunity. Um, of course, at the time, we didn't know we were called the Empower Center, but it was a College and Career Academy program for.
Right.
And, um, she said, would you be interested? And of course, all I could hear was that kid, right? Where's my hope? And I thought, man, I can change somebody's future.
I bet you hear that young man a lot.
All the time.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I hear him as a commissioner, like, because I don't want anybody to grow up in this county and feel like they can't come back here.
Exactly.
Like, that they can't live here, they can't get a job here. If they want to stay here, live here, play here, that they can do that. And that is, that, it drives me, because I don't want that for my own kids. I, I see that kid and I see my own kids. I don't ever want to hear somebody's kid, especially mine, say, Dad, I'm sorry, I just, I can't live in Jackson County.
I can't wait to get out of here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's horrible.
Well, I mean, I get that if they're, you know, teenagers, right?
Well, there's always a rebellious teenager, not that I would know anything about that, but you know, but, but being a teenager is one thing in saying that, but being a, a young twenty-year-old, something, twenty-something-year-old, college graduate, diplomas on the wall.
Right.
It may not be a, a choice of, I don't want to be here. It could be a choice of, I can't be here.
Right, and that's what I want to prevent.
Diplomas aren't free.
Right, they can't.
Yeah, I can't stay here.
Yeah, so, and all, and all that, uh, obviously, uh, right, um, April was very, very instrumental in, in leading the group and leading that charge and, um, you know, we, we, we joked about it, one time, we stopped counting at a thousand hours a year of volunteer hours that we had spent, uh, on this, but, you know, we won the grant at the state, three point one million dollars. We raised all kinds of money, you know, uh, to get the school up and going, but I tell you what, Tom, the, um, what happened to me the other day, I had a mom come up to me, uh, and for anybody that doesn't know, we have a, a program here that Caterpillar helped us with.
Simulators.
The simulators, right?
Right.
To drive bulldozers and, um, track hoes.
Yeah.
And, uh, excavators. And the, um, the kid had gone and passed his test.
Became certified.
Right, and the mom said, look, she said, I cannot thank you enough for what you guys have done and what you've invested. She said, my, my son passed that, uh, exam the other day and the offer was sixty thousand dollars a year.
To start.
To start at eighteen years old. When he graduates, he has an offer, should he want it.
Yeah.
For sixty thousand dollars a year. She said, by the way, that's more than my husband and I make combined.
How about that?
So in that instant, I thought right back to that kid, right? Where's my hope?
The hope.
And I'm looking at that mom and I'm saying, there it is.
You found some of it.
Yeah.
That's awesome, man.
And now we're going to have, what, almost, almost two thousand kids in here next year?
I think, I think that's the goal, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I don't, I don't think it's a goal anymore.
And we're right up against it. Last I heard, it was somewhere like a nineteen, seven, one thousand nine hundred and seventy, uh, students. So, yeah, man, that's, but for me, but see, that's what this whole thing is about, Tom. It's not about, um, you know, a position or anything like that. This is about making Jackson County, seeing Jackson County for where it is, believing that Jackson County can be, you know, something better, that shining star that you talked about, and actually taking ideas and making them reality. That's the experience that Jackson County needs.
Listen to everybody.
Right.
Learn from them.
Yep.
Uh, a good friend of mine, Randy Winfield, was in here just the other day.
Love Randy.
Yeah, but he talked about awesome. Uh, we were, we were throwing back and forth, the fact that listening is one of the greatest gifts we've ever been given, if we'll use it.
[laughing]
But what you're saying is you listen to everybody and, and that, that's a quality you can't beat.
Yeah, no, I mean, and it doesn't matter. Um, you know, I've, I've had people on both sides of the aisle, Democrat, Republican, Independent, Libertarian, whatever you want to call it, uh, who call me. I put my cell phone number out there, I don't care, call me.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll talk to you. Matter of fact, it's actually easier for me to talk to you than it is to email.
I agree.
Along with the other two hundred emails I get.
Yeah.
But the, um, so, I mean, I've, I've done these discussions around the tax assessments and, you know, what's going on in the county with everybody. I've, I've met, I've done them for the Republican GOP, I've done them for the Democrats, I've done them for neighborhoods, um, different communities, different age groups. It doesn't matter to me, right? If you want information, I'm willing to help give it to you, because I think the, you know, Ben Carson said it a few years ago, the greatest equalizer on planet earth is in education.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And I don't mean just at a college.
Right.
Education on what is really going on.
Yeah.
Uh, in Jackson County and around Jackson County is just as important. And being educated on what really happens, uh, in Jackson County with tax dollars is a big, big deal.
I'm with you, I'm with, well, hey, we're, we're talking about taxes. Did we, did we talk enough about the tax assessments that just came through? Did we talk enough about that? Can we move on from that?
Well, I mean, if anybody wants to talk about it, you can call me. Uh, I feel like we've, you know, I've done four or five different town halls and, you know, we had one big one, uh, that the county had, and then I've done several others. Um, but I, I'm willing to talk to anybody and everybody about it and how we got here, um, whatever they want to talk about.
From, from a layman's perspective, and that's me.
Sure.
Uh, if my property value increases twenty-five, thirty percent, which actually is probably more than that over the last couple of years, shouldn't I be expecting a tax increase? I'm general, I'm generalizing, Chad.
Sure, well.
I mean, isn't that reasonable?
I mean, reasonable at some point, right? There, there's, there's a point, right? And if you're talking about that the inflation rate, two, three, four, five percent, something like that, that's one thing, but when.
Sure.
When you open your tax bill and it's twenty-six, forty-six, fifty-six, two times what you paid, uh, I can understand where that causes a little bit of a heart palpitation.
I think ours went up a good forty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, at the end of the day, um, yeah, there's going to be some sort of increase as, as things go along, but again, back to how, well, okay, now what? Now what do you do?
Right.
Right? And we talked about bringing in the right kind of businesses, uh, into the area that can help alleviate that from residents. So you've got two sides of this coin, right? I hear the, the loudest group I hear obviously is the sixty-five and up community.
Right.
You know, saying, hey, man, the, the school tax, whatever, and we'll talk about that one. Uh, but then I get the, the mom and dad, it's not even a mom and dad, it's a young married couple. She's a teacher, he's a police officer. We can't afford to live in Jackson County with this kind of rate. So, um, you get both ends of the spectrum, right? And, 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 look, I give it to them, the, the people who say, hey, we've paid our part. You know, we don't have kids in the system anymore.
Right.
And then you've got the young people who say, well, we don't have kids in the system either, and we're just trying to make ends meet.
Yeah.
Um, so again, the, the balancing act that we've been talking about takes a unique kind of a person to look at this situation and say, okay, now what? What kind of businesses can we bring in here? Where can we put them, right?
That is super important.
What, what does the infrastructure support?
And that's probably more important.
Right. I mean, we've had opportunities where at the county level, where they needed a lot of water. We don't have that kind of water capacity, so we have to turn them, turn them down.
Yeah.
Um, because you have to protect the residents and you have to protect your current commercial stuff. Um, you know, are there good opportunities out there? Yeah. Are we talking to them? Absolutely. And, um, you know, we're going to do the best that we can to try to grow this local economy here in a direction that, in, in my opinion, now, this is Chad's opinion.
Sure.
In a direction that.
Candidate Bingham, folks.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
So, to grow the county in a direction that helps all of us, right? The, the one thing I hear, another thing that I hear is people saying, hey, man, I want to be able to spend my money in Jackson County. I work here, I live here.
I have said that.
Yeah.
I have, I have said that.
I want to be able to shop, live, play, I want to do it all, right here in Jackson County. And, um, you know, the, to drive across the county border to have to go down to, you know, to, to get shopping or hardware or whatever, just irritates, it irritates me as well.
I, I love Athens, but, uh, I've got to go there for a Costco. I got to go there for a bunch of stuff.
Sure.
Or I head south.
Yeah.
Down eighty-five.
Oof.
I know, as little, as little as possible, but you, you got to do what you got to do.
Yeah, I got locations down there. I can't be, you know, I can't, I can't be too.
I've got a million and one friends down there, so.
I get it.
I, I, I love, I love to visit.
Yeah. So, I mean, really, at the end of the day, that's what it's going to be, uh, for Jackson County. It's, it's got to be all of us working together and one of the things that you, when you're talking to people, they want certain things. Well, the next statement they'll say, but not in my backyard.
Every time.
Right.
Every time.
Every time. That's the majority of the time, but on occasion, I have told people, I said, look, if this is what you want, then you have to give me something.
Absolutely.
And they're like, well, what do I, you know, what I need to give you, you're the government. And I was like, no. Then you need to be the one willing to say, hey, you can put this around my backyard.
Right.
Maybe not in my backyard.
Close to it.
Yeah, is it going to cause some traffic issues? I mean, probably nothing we can't fix.
Right.
Right? With time and the right strategy.
Right.
So, I've just started asking people, it's like, hey, if you want it, be willing to be part of the solution, or tell me where you think this should go, or where you think, you know, uh, how are we going to do this? Because what you're trying to do, if you notice the Costco you just talked about, where'd they put it? They put it right up against the county line.
Yeah, they did.
Why'd they do that?
Because nobody wanted it in their backyard.
Right, so they, to pull money out of Jackson County.
Oh, see, I never thought of that. You're right.
Yeah, so if you were going to put something.
You're right.
Why wouldn't you put it in the corner or around?
Now I feel guilty.
But, but think about it.
That makes a lot of sense.
The outlet malls over in Forsyth County did the same thing. They didn't want the outlet mall, so what'd they do? They went right across the line.
Yeah.
And built the outlet mall. So what happened? All that money went to the next county. So, the county is, is actually fairly smart with that.
It's very smart.
So not only did they not make it far for you to drive to take your money out of Jackson County, they made it awfully convenient too.
Yeah, they did.
So, it's all those kinds of things when you're considering, see, the pieces, man, right? Think about the pieces.
Lot of pieces.
That we're talking about here. We're not just talking about one thing will do this and one thing will do that. And this, this is a very, very complicated, uh, jigsaw puzzle that we're going to have to put together here.
Alright, so we do have a senior tax exemption. You're working on that, a senior tax exemption.
So, we don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet.
Yeah, so that, um, but yeah, when I first got into office, um, I had a group approach me, uh, of seniors who said, hey, I'd like to talk to you about this.
Right.
Well, knowing that myself, I don't have that, that's not in my purview, right? That's not in my.
Right.
My, that's the Board of Education. So I called a friend of mine who's on the Board of Education and I said, hey, I don't, they haven't invited you, but I'm inviting you because I know, you know, you're on the Board of Education and I'm a big believer in bringing the right people to the meeting and putting the right people in the room.
That's the whole, yeah.
I said, man, if you'd like to come, I mean, you know, I think they're going to give you some good information. And so it started from there and it, it went from that to the next meeting. It was me, a Board of Education member, the superintendent, uh, House of Representatives from the state of Georgia and this group of people. And then the next thing, it's two House of Representatives, a Senator, the, you know, the superintendent, Board of Education, like, it's, so again, my, my point in all that is to say, before it was even really an issue, and it wasn't even mine to tackle.
Right.
I saw the problem, so I get involved and, and you, I used the influence that I had, I used the relationships that I have, and I put the right people in the room to attack the problem. So now the school doesn't have a, an exact answer. Yeah, there are things that are being discussed, and if you were any of my town halls, the Board of Education member uh, that was with me, he said, you know, hey, we're. One of the things, we're gonna have to do this in phases.
Oh, yeah.
And, and he said, so if we, a couple of things, like what if we, uh, the thing that's getting the traction is maybe a freeze. Like, let's start with that. If you're sixty-five and up, we just set the, wherever your taxes are when you turn sixty-five, bang.
Right.
It's set.
Good place to start.
It's a good place to start. So that gives the Board of Education a chance, right, to see, okay, so what's the real effect?
See, yeah, see where, see where they end up.
Right, and then you can really start looking at, okay, how many people are we really talking about? How much money are we really gonna be short? Because here's the other side of it, I have three rules uh, on any of these things, and any of these meetings, I said, I tell everybody, I said, I have three rules on, on any of these deals. One, I want the seniors to have the tax exemption, right? Number two, you cannot hurt the education system and you cannot uh, degrade the education that our students get.
Right.
Right, with it. And number three, you don't transfer those taxes to my house.
That would be nice.
Right, so, but you can do that, right? You can, you can do that. Between the growth that's coming, we talked about that tax, Tax Digest a little while ago.
Mm-hmm.
As those guys come up, they pay school taxes too, right? So as the more that those guys come and the more that they pay, and the more the splosh money that goes into the school system, obviously the lower you can do the, the residential. Or you can eat up that, you know, whatever it is, a two million dollar plus uh, shortfall that would be there. And that's, that's all I've said the whole time. I said, guys, there's smart people in this room.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we can figure this out.
Yeah.
And man, we've had some interesting, interesting discussions, and we've had some pretty heated.
Oh, I can imagine.
Discussions, cause I'm a business owner too, right?
Right.
So you start talking about, well, we're just gonna raise taxes on businesses. Wait, timeout now. You know, I've got all these employees that work for me, you start doing some crazy stuff.
You suddenly have less employees working for you.
Because somebody's gotta pay it, right? And, and now.
Yeah.
There are reasonable opportunities in there uh, that go around, but at the end of the day, I think that where they are. Uh, I think the school board is taking a very good uh, approach. Uh, they are being sincere.
Good.
They are being intentional. Uh, they are doing their job as far as protecting our students, uh, which I think is their number one job.
Priority one, right, right.
And um, I mean, you know, after that, that's um, but I, I think that's what this whole thing is about. When we talked about Jackson County, it's that example right there of, of true leadership of saying, hey, I, I may not be able to be the one to make that decision. But I know the people who can, and I'm gonna bring them and put them in the room.
Get them in the room.
And we're gonna have a discussion together.
Right.
Um, and I said.
Bar the door if you have to.
Yeah, well, I even said that when I was running for District Three. I said, look, this is about getting people in the room and talking. This is not about me making a, a single decision. This is not about anyone making a decision on their own. Get the right people in the room and find the answer together. And it's amazing how, how much better the answer is when you work on it as a group than you do as one person.
Absolutely. Something I want to circle back to, it just popped in my mind, having something like this Empower Center, sorry to jump back there. I've got to believe, and, and I don't know much, I have to believe that having something like this is going to attract bigger, not necessarily bigger, but better businesses. Entities, corporations, whatever you, whatever you want to call them, into this area.
Yeah, I mean, I, I give you.
The involvement, it, the opportunity for involvement is so huge.
Sure. Well, you know, one of the things we talk about is workforce development. That was one of the things we talked about a lot.
Always huge.
Right.
Any community.
And when the battery company was looking uh, to come here, they told us at the Chamber of Commerce that one of the reasons that they uh, picked Jackson County. When it got down to, you know, splitting hairs at the end was because of the Empower Center.
Right.
And that they could come see where their workforce was gonna come from. You know, when, when John Scott and those guys over at the Chamber who are doing economic development, talking about these companies we want to bring and help with the Tax Digest, they come over here. They, they bring the people here, well, let me show you where your workforce is coming from, and you've got two thousand students.
Yeah.
Walking around the hallways over here, and you can go over to the labs and, you know, you got students over in the, you know, the nursing program getting phlebotomy certificates. You got people working in pharmacy, you got mechatronics going over there, you've got the certificates we talked about, you got agriculture going on, you got construction going on, ROTC. F, um, you know, FFA, and our FFA program here, when they combine the schools, is now one of the top in the state.
Nice.
I mean, there's a lot of great things going on over here, when you can walk a company in here and say, hey, here's your, here's your workforce. And these kids look them in the face and shake their hand and smile and hold a, a good conversation with them, it is. I mean, that's amazing to watch, man. I just almost want to cry every time I see it.
It, like, I think that hope word, hope comes back around.
Yeah.
It's very, yeah, to be eighteen years old and be certified in some of these fields, eighteen, nineteen, whatever, man, that's pretty cool.
Man, it took a long time for me to make sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Me too, yeah. I was uh, probably what, late twenties by the time I made that a year.
Oh, yeah.
At least.
I mean, I, yeah, just, but coming out of high school, I can never.
Yeah.
I couldn't imagine. We had something similar uh, where I come from in uh, central Florida, uh, around the space program down there. My dad was a flow manager for the Discovery Space Shuttle, and they had welding programs down there for the same kind of a thing, you know? And, and I had kids that I graduated high school with that were making back then in the nineties, you know, seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars as welders.
Wow.
And never went to school.
Yeah.
I mean.
They learned a skill.
Yeah, not just that, they're retired now.
Oh, yeah.
And they are living the life that the rest of us are trying to get to.
There's, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, yeah.
A, a hot, a hot topic in Jackson County for a little while now has been warehouses.
Yeah.
Warehouses. But you were sharing some information with me, those warehouses play a very important role in the county.
Yeah, so, I mean, does anybody like to drive down the road and see warehouses?
Probably not.
Probably not. And I told somebody, if you've ever been to Hilton Head, and you've ever seen how they have the trees along the wall of the road, it feels like you're kind of driving through the country a little bit. But right behind those trees is Walmart and Wendy's.
All the signs that you can't see.
Right.
Yes.
So I, I, I wish that some of the things were more like that, where we had better tree coverage and those kinds of, but again, that's. So back to your question, the um, but the warehouses back when COVID was going on, you know, we were probably running around a two or three percent uh, unemployment rate in Jackson County before COVID. So which basically means if you wanted a job in Jackson County, you had a job.
Right.
Those kind of numbers. And what you, what you saw was uh, obviously the economy shuts down. Our emplo- unemployment rate, I think, jumped back up to six and a half, if I remember right, somewhere in that range.
On it, yeah.
But what they, but people didn't realize is that those warehouses, because everybody started shopping online and getting deliveries, you know, sent to their house.
The, the, the shipping hubs.
Yeah, where I saw, just in the school budget, I think it was over a million dollars uh, in a month, that the, the splosh money brought in from those warehouses. And the thing that people didn't realize is during that time, those warehouses are what kept Jackson County and the school system in the black.
Really?
Right, yeah, so. Uh, us surrounding counties that didn't have uh, those kinds of things, they were hurt, and they were hurt for a long time. And when COVID was over, or I say over, um, when things were starting to try to get back to normal. Because of the warehouses and the money was still coming in, because people were still, now they had a new habit, right? They're buying online.
Oh, yes, it's an addiction, folks.
So instead of us having to lay people off, like a lot of other counties were having to do, we were able to keep those people employed because of that money coming in. And our employment rate dropped right back down to two percent in less than a year. And, and that was a credit to those warehouses. I mean, again, I understand what people are, are saying, you know, I hear it all the time, um, you know, well, you know, you gave them, they don't pay any taxes. That's not true. It's not true at all. Uh, the, the warehouses, I think there's only two left on any kind of a, a tax abatement program. I think one falls off this year and one falls off the next year or two, and then we don't, we haven't done one in like ten or twelve years.
Right.
In unincorporated Jackson County.
Right.
So um, you know, the um, the warehouses do play a, a good part. They are the ones that keep the tax mileage rate and everything down uh, as it is. Do they produce enough to get rid of? You know, the senior taxes we talked about, not, not at this point. Um, you know, are there some empty ones out there? Yeah. You know, at, at some point, they'll, somebody will come and somebody will.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we'll take those and, you know, we'll start getting the sales dollars and all those kinds of things and get the full benefit uh, of why they're there. But um, they're not all bad, is my point. They're not the greatest thing to look at, a spec building.
Right.
But you know, what they actually bring into the community, uh, in some cases is actually pretty good.
I'm with you. No, I'm with you, completely with you. Well, man, we covered a lot of stuff. They're looking at me funny from, from the back there saying, you gotta wrap this up.
Yeah, man.
No.
Holy cow, I didn't realize it'd been that long already.
It, we, we're doing good, we're doing good. No, this, this is a ton of good stuff. We knew we had a lot of stuff to talk about, Chad, we knew that. You're, you're running for uh, for Chair, Commission Chair, Chairman. Do you have an opponent yet?
Uh, yeah, there's one out there.
You do have an opponent. And now, wh- what is the cutoff to, uh, to announce that you are running or someone is running?
Oh, really? It's all the way to qualification next year, so.
So we got a whole nother year.
Uh.
So there could be more, that's my point.
Yeah, I think the, the qualification, gosh, I think it's April next year, I think.
Okay.
So.
Almost a year.
Yeah, and then, you know, once uh, you don't even have to announce, uh, you just go.
Really?
Yeah, show for qualifications. We had a guy, this, a short story, he showed up at the event, he was so mad with everything that's going on with leadership. He said, you know, what's available, what can I run for?
About that.
And uh, they said, well, here's the things. He said, well, how much do they cost? And so they went through, you know, what each qualification fee was, and he said, well, I'll do that one.
Nice.
And uh, so he jumped into one of the races, but um.
I'm with you.
You know, it, it, that's when you truly announce, uh, is when you, you know, you, you do the qualification, assign your name, pay your money.
I got you. The, the reason, the reason I bring that up is, eh, this studio is open to, to al- almost anyone. Uh, I, I, I extend a hand to, to any of your opponents, anyone running uh, against you. We'd love to have them in. We all have a story, right?
Sure.
Chad, personally, I think you're a great guy. I've known you for about a year and a half or so. I think you're cool. Uh, but honestly, I do, I do extend that out to, to any of your opponents that wish to come in.
Sure, and we should.
Full disclosure.
Yeah, we should.
Uh, it's kind of like uh, like you getting people in the room, I like getting people in the studio.
Mm-hmm.
And with this microphone and, and creating our podcast, I kind of, kind of do the same thing, sort of, sort of. All right, man, and I'm, okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it to you here before we get out of here. Why do the people of Jackson County need, or why should they, I won't say need, why should someone vote for Chad Bingham?
Well, I would say because of the direction that I want to take Jackson County, what I believe Jackson County uh, can be. Uh, I think the direction that we're going uh, and the direction that um, Jackson County has been going now for the last ten years or so.